For advice of council, I'd like to call the Village Annual Retreat Friday, February 23, 2018, 9:00 AM, starting time now is at 9:30. I'd like to call that meeting to order. First up is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any additions, changes, or anything we want to?
Can we table stuff until the next meeting?
Yes, yes, it's just like a regular meeting.
I think we should table the code of ethics until the next meeting.
Okay. Table two, let's be official here.
The March two...
March meeting, March regular meeting.
Yeah, the March regular meeting on the 13th at 6:30 PM at Village Hall.
Actually, that meeting, you actually have a budget work session at 5:30, so...
Right, but the regular meeting...
But the regular meeting at 6:30.
That's a meeting we're tabled. Do you want to give the address of the village? No, I'm just kidding.
If I have it handy, it is 10,004.
Anything else? I think we kind of looked at this and it looked like it's pretty good. We were concerned about some timing and stuff, so hopefully we can get through this and get you out of here, so we'll get through that stuff. In fact, one of the big things...
Was there anything else being tabled?
I'm good.
All right, so I'll need a motion to adopt agenda as I mean. All those are paper?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have a Welcome in Review of the Year. Do we want to wait for Chris? Is she? Is it? I don't think it's... She's just doing her stuff, so. Anyway, welcome, everyone. I appreciate you all. Those of you that are here taking the time to be here for the full day and doing a one-day retreat versus the two days we've had in the past, I think is a plus and focusing on Planning Board and PR&amp;G on separate meetings, I think is very valuable for both them and for us. So this change, I think, is going to be well received going forward, I think. I do something called Check-In/Check-Out. Basically, it's anything going on in your life that, you know, that's happening and stuff, just kind of a welcoming thing. I'll start, and anyone else that wants to chime in and stuff. Excited to be here, excited about what I see coming down the pike for Marvin, excited about, you know, the things that we're doing to move forward. Only thing personal in my life, anything, today is a father-daughter dance, so we have cotillion coming up that my kids are doing, and I'm excited to go to that. So good things are happening, and I'm just happy to be here and looking forward to this meeting. So anyone else want to chime in?
No, I'm good.
Okay. As I look back over the last year, I realize that government moves slow, but it is purposeful. And the importance of that is, yes, we may move slow, but I think there's a reason for that. We've experienced a lot of moving parts in the last year as I look back. Barbie was kind enough to print all the agendas out, and as I was reviewing things and remembering things, it's like this, in some ways, has been the longest year for me personally because of all that we've gone through. We've not always, as a board, agreed on issues, and it has unfortunately got personal at times, but I'm hoping that that all changes as we move forward. We obviously had a very contentious election year. Changes were made. We've had a number of staffing positions change as well. If we go back a year, right around this time, I think both Robin and Kelly were appointed, if I'm not mistaken, and happy to have Kelly still here, but again, there were some... There were some changes that... But my thing is, we keep moving forward even though it appears for this particular village, we've had to take a few steps back in the staffing, and we've... Some things hadn't gotten done, but I think with the team we're putting together going forward, I'm very excited about it. And again, the good news is, I think we're moving in the right direction, and that started with filling our boards. Planning Boards is now full, PR&amp;G is now full, and, you know, we're filling in with people who are willing to volunteer their time, who really care about Marvin. So, I mean, that process where it's collaborating efforts from numerous people from numerous neighborhoods, I think, is a very positive thing, and I think we will see some good things. Also, who we hire is important. You know, I always say, you know, you always want to fill, you know, fill positions with people who are qualified, that know maybe what you don't know. We had filled some vacant spots with some qualified individuals, so we welcomed Laura in our ordinance as a planner, part-time planner. Very excited to have her. Welcome back Barbie. With all the knowledge you have as a clerk, we appreciate you being here and willingness to come back. And again, we're still in the process of finding the right administrator that will fill the spot for us. Highlights over the last year, we approved the Village Road Acceptance Plan. Ideally, I'd like to see that plan shortened, but that's something that can be ongoing discussions of how we get from a 20-year to a more condensed version. Part of that was the ability to have homes voluntary annex into Marvin. It was a great way where you're not forcing annexation, but again, it's bringing more people into the community and closing up that, what they call the doughnut hole, what we refer to. Another highlight is roundabouts. If I'm not mistaken, what I'm seeing going on over there, the cutting of the trees and prepping and stuff, it's all stuff that would be, makes sense for them to start. So by all accounts, and please let me know if you know anything different. It looks like we are still moving forward for spring start time.
They're moving the power lines.
I saw they're moving the power lines and stuff, so very good information. In fact, we've even seen with our adopted resolution, a resolution that was just recent, a 20% allocated to this road, which we've taken it from 2000, I think projected 25 to as soon as 2022. I would like to shout out, I forget her name, but I think a part of that was through an online-type sign-up to petition to get the roads...
Gina Lorenzo.
Is it Gina Lorenzo? I thought it was someone else from Meadowlark.
Oh, maybe.
That put the, you know, when she had a big sign up there, and it was basically signed a petition. I think what it comes down to is, like, I don't think we have magic wards as council members to talk individually, but when you get the community involved like they did and kind of a grassroots, I says, obviously, that was, had to be part of it, plus, I think, quite frankly, the state found some money, and we're moving that. It appears that we're moving the Marvin Newtown Road up, so that's very... The other exciting thing was the trail improvements in Tullamore. Given what they had and given what we did, I think that sets the bar for us as we go forward for planning, PR&amp;G, as they look at trails, and even what we're going to require any developer to do. I think that is a beautiful example of what we've done right as part of the village. Again, we filled the boards, Planning Boards, PR&amp;G now. It's the first time, I think, they've been filled in quite some time. I don't know if it's ever been always filled the whole time, but I'm excited about that because, again, I think we've done, taken the time to get the right people in there, and again, it's going to be a collaboration of minds, which I think is exciting. We've adopted a budget, thank you, Chris, and we are adhering to it, as far as I can tell, our budget and stuff. I mean, that's something that even our national government has had challenges with, but we're required to do it. We had final plats with Broadmoor and Barcraft approved, which is, which is good. I mean, it's, you know, I hate to fill out the rest of Marvin with just homes and stuff, so I'm excited to talk about what we do with the downtown corridor that's been on the table for quite some time, and we'll be talking about that with our land use plan. And then continued park events. It's great to see that those events keep going on. I think we had a nice holiday event that was well-attended. I think we had the National Night Out. Sometimes it all depends on weather, but the movie nights, these things need to be encouraged, and I think we're even talking about expanding that park for clinics right now. The only thing I didn't see is, I look back on the, in closing, as I look back at the goal, the former retreat, and there were no goals that we had on the agenda and stuff. So my goal is, quite frankly, for 2018, two things. Getting that land use plan completed for this year and involving the landowners that are specifically tied to the corridor here, how that happens through meetings and where we go from there, I'm excited, but also branding. I know I've talked to a few individuals that have volunteered to spend some time and their own money and funds to present us, and they're national branders that happen to do this for a living, and they've actually reached out to me and saying, hey, we can do something special for Marvin. So again, I'm excited. Thank you for being here, excited about talking about everything that's on the agenda. It's unfortunate that Ron and Robert are not attending, as we got a last-minute notice that there were some, they believe that there was some snafu in the, if this was considered an official meeting, and I think, again, we determined through our own council that it is an official meeting, so.
I have copies of that.
Oh, yeah, I can...
Can you finish?
Yes, I can do that. The... Oh, another few shout-outs, something that tells me we're listening, and I thank Kim, who has now been elected on the position, and she was a big person, a big influence on getting public information meetings held or creating open house for the land use plan, so I thank you for that, and welcome to our board, our council. The only other thing is, I think we made some decisions even recently on road widening, and I think I sent you all the email on NC road widening, which I think I'm going to need some clarification on what they mean. So we can talk about that at some point. And then the final thing is, I know there's an upcoming meeting of the HOA presidents, I believe, that they're going to be meeting and just kind of get together as neighborhoods and find out what it is and how they can kind of, whether it's guiding us and what they'd like to see done in our town. I think that's exciting, and I think that in conjunction with the letter I wrote, and I think there are a few changes, including everybody signing it, which would be all the councilmen, which I'm totally fine with. With that, that's all I had for the year. Again, things move slow, not a lot changes, but I am excited what lies ahead, so. So next up, I have 9:15, Review of Village Council Mission Statement. This was interesting because I highlighted a lot, I almost highlighted the whole thing because it's sometimes you feel that we don't adhere to some of these things, but I'll just read it out loud. "We will strive to build strong relationships with all of our citizens, and always remember that the role of government is to serve the people. We will be open and transparent at all times." I think with some of the things we're talking about as far as communication with the HOA boards, we're showing that we're going to get that done. "We will cultivate relationships with our..." Constituency, thank you for that. I was struggling with that. "By embracing our core values, which is respect, integrity, tolerance, and commitment to excellence." And I highlighted those because I think that's as important as we go forward. "With these core values in mind, we envision a government that is respectful to all citizens. We envision a government that recognizes that the integrity of its reputation is paramount, and is tolerant, but will not tolerate disrespect or dishonorable actions." I read that, and I think that's a... I don't see any changes. I'll put it to the floor to see if you'd like to make any additions or, you know, but I think it is about being transparent, and I think we're taking the steps to do that as we go forward.
I think it's fine.
Okay. All right, so next up on the agenda, then we have Review of Village Council Rules of Procedure. And this is where we invited Melanie to come in because we thought we might get some direction, and if we could, I think before we even get into this, I mean, some of the things...
This is what I'm going to go over when you're ready for me.
Okay. Well, I'll just, I'll go ahead and put it to you, but just looking at the rules of procedures is, you know, we want to do, we talked about, Nick and I, and I think Kim and I separately talked about trying to, when a lot of us take vacations and stuff, and getting to a point where we can be here electronically, if you will, and not be counted. So if that's a charter change, I think there's a big interest in that because I think that solves a lot of the problems of people not being able to be here physically. So I think if we can get, move in that direction, that may solve a lot of the concerns I or other council members may have during regular meetings. Because I've witnessed in the last year a lot of suspending of the rules, adding things to the agenda that, and changes that were made that were not officially proper, you talk about proper notice being given, 48 hours. That was done quite a bit at the tail end of last year of them changing things. So if we can do that electronically, then I think that solves a lot of the problems. I think, Nick, you and I talked about that specifically.
Yeah, I mean, I have basically June and August where, you know, I have family obligations and I'm out of town, but I certainly could be available to be on, you know, electronically for four hours or whatever the meeting is, three hours.
So is this something you want, just if the individual's out of town?
Yes, it's not like, oh, I just don't feel like getting off my couch and coming in. Like, out of town, not...
Yeah, that's the only thing I thought of, being abused, that nobody shows up and we're all dialing in, and we have a clerk and a thing.
Yeah, I'm watching to New York.
Right.
And maybe we could put something in there, just say, a minimum of three have to be present. You know, this way, it would be...
So you'd still have a quorum.
We still have a quorum physically, physical quorum of three, but if we're all out of town, let's face it, that doesn't make sense. Or if we get to the point where, because I could see that happening with individuals that just say, you know what, I'm just not going to show up, I'm just going to...
Yeah.
Every time, and that's not what...
But I mean, my question was, you know, is it legal? Because I know a year or so ago, the Planning Board had a meeting where they did it, you know, where they had somebody call in, it wasn't to get their quorum, they had, I think it was Richard, you know, Holberg, they used, they got him on as part of the meeting, they made that an official meeting by using...
From what I understand, with guidelines as far as electronic meeting, by electronic means, is that there has to be a quorum, and there's a question on whether or not the connection is lost during the meeting and trying to get that person back on the phone. That's some of the issues. It's not against the law to do that, you just have to come up with a policy that states that, so.
The last time, you have, I researched this, it was back in 2014 for another...
Oh, okay.
Is that what you have that letter?
I have a school of government bulletin from August 2013, Remote Participation.
Okay, yeah. It says, I'm just... Presently, there are no statutes that specifically authorize, this is again, when I researched this in 2014, that specifically authorize remote participation in meetings. In 2008, the General Assembly enacted local legislation allowing Hyde County conduct business using simultaneous communication. However, that legislation is specific to Hyde County. I think, you know, there's a question about being physically present for voting. The provision for electronic meetings, apparently the legislative intent was to ensure public access to meetings, as there were already state boards that were conducting meetings by telephones and some other, I guess, boards like that. So that's why they allowed that, is so people could, I guess, have a way to call in and hear what's going on. But I can certainly look into it and see, you know, what if anything happened since 2014, but it looks like it's something you all would need, local legislation.
Because, I mean, we're not actually, like I said, if we do the thing that, you know, it has to be a quorum physically present, it's really not electronic meetings, it's just that you're allowing...
Right. The question is, the person then who calls in, and making sure their vote counts, right?
Right.
So that's the concern, is to make sure we can do it that way, so that vote is not invalidated.
Right.
But I'll look into that. The question that I researched that came up from the last meeting that this memo has to do with was the whole mayor voting. And as you can see, it's not, it's not entirely clear, not even in our general statutes. I highlighted the most important parts for you. 16867, you know, states, "The powers and duties of the mayor shall be such as conferred upon him by law, together with any such powers and duties that may be conferred, that the council gives to him." And then 16869 says, "The mayor shall have the right to vote only when there are equal number of votes in the affirmative and in the negative." So that would be just to break a tie. So that kind of goes against...
What?
...amend the rules of procedure.
Right.
But 168101 talks about, did I give you guys two? I didn't give you the second page?
There's one on the back.
Yeah, oh, yours, you have it back. Okay, sorry, there's a two.
Page two, you mean?
Yes, page two.
I don't have that.
Gosh, what happened with it?
That's okay, let me have one and I'll make copies right there.
Mine's on the back.
It's on the back, okay, somewhere. I was doing this late last night. Do you have it back?
No, but it's okay.
Okay, I have the back. The back's important, though.
Okay, that's all right, she's getting it, so.
If you sit next to me, I need it to look up, sorry. I thought I did two-sided. Under 168101, it talks about optional forms of government under eight selection of mayor. A, the mayor shall be elected by all the qualified voters of a city for a term not less than two nor more than four years, or B, the mayor can be selected by the council from among its membership. And then it says, "Under option A, the mayor may be given the right to vote on all matters before the council, or he may be limited to voting only in break, to break a tie." So 101 conflicts with 69 in that it says you all can give, the council can give the mayor authority to vote on other matters and not just break a tie.
If they wrote their own rules.
Not just own rules. My interpretation, this is where you need the second page, is that, right, state statutes are going to prevail over local ordinances, so I don't feel like the rules of procedure can be as strong as a state statute. While you can make an argument that you can change the rules of procedure and still be fine under 101, I think it's the safest way to avoid any challenge whatsoever would be to get local legislation, you know, and to change your charter. I have an example of Gastonia recently did that just in 2017. Because the concern is, you don't want, let's say you're awarding a contract to someone, and the council amended the rules of procedure and said, oh, you can vote on everything. But then that conflicts with 16869. So you don't want to invalidate a big action like that because your rules of procedure isn't, you know, that's just your rules of procedure, it's not, it's not an actual statute. But if you get local legislation, you know, that's a statute. As far as appointments to boards and committees, I'm not as concerned about that because, but for the Board of Adjustments, they're all advisory boards, so they're, I don't see any major decision that you would be worried about being...
What about hirings and firings?
That's not, that's not board appointments.
Okay, but, but they've done that in the past, and it has not been put on the agenda, and that has been done...
Oh, no, I'm just talking about the mayor voting.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm just talking about the mayor voting.
Okay.
So I could defend it either way. If you all want to amend the rules of procedure to put that the mayor can vote for appointments, I think, I think it's fine because it's appointments. But if you want to go any step beyond that, you definitely need a local act. You didn't, no, that's a...
Meaning what?
I'm just telling you.
Meaning what? Like, if we want to vote on everything?
Yes.
Because that's not what I'm looking.
Right. I know that's not what you're looking for, but that's, but that's what the law is. If you want to be sure that there's, no one can bring any legal challenge, even though I feel like I could defend the rules of procedure change, then you could, I mean, the safest thing's always to get local legislation or amend your charter. That's, that's your safest bet, if you want to vote for appointments. But I understand your question is going deeper than that because you have other concerns, and that's why you want me to look into electronic participation in meetings.
Right, right. And that, if that, we can do that, and I think that solves this issue because it's... I, I, well...
Can I get a copy of our charter? Like, is it, is it online, or is it...
Yeah, if you Google American Legal Jurs, American Legal Publishing, American Legal Publishing, Village of Marvin.
I might be able to find one, but you can't, I'll keep looking.
American Legal Publishing, Village of Marvin, and all your ordinances come up online, and their charter's like the first one.
Yeah, and rather this being seen as like a power grab, which some have suggested it's not, it's a protection mechanism, because what I've learned, when there is a disadvantage and not all four council people are there, that without proper notice, they come in, and this may be, we talked about maybe beefing up our existing rules, maybe, maybe that satisfies it, but say if there's a two-to-one disadvantage where the mayor would never vote because they would have three people voting, that they change the, suspend the rules when the opening agenda comes up and add something to the agenda that is an appointment to a position or a hiring or firing or removal of a board. My whole thing is, is there a way to make that invalid if there was not proper notice? Like, say they suspend the rules and say, we're going to add this to the agenda, and then they make an action. Our rules could say, you can't, can they not say you can't do that in a meeting where you can suspend the rules and change the rules, where it actually, they take an action? I didn't think that's what, because our existing rules say that all of our stuff, and we've seen it happen in the past, that our clerk received, never received anything. We received stuff regarding a hiring hours before it happened, literally. So there was never proper notice to the community, the village, it was just added to the agenda, and I'm saying it has to be 48 hours and no one can change that.
If you want something with sharper teeth, then I don't know if it would be an ordinance, but like you said, the rules of procedure can be suspended. They're all, they're your rules, so they can be suspended. So you would need something that would, I guess, violate an ordinance.
Ah, okay.
An ordinance that would prevent it, so, because an ordinance is stronger than your rules.
Well, let me give you an example. So why didn't, so when I questioned council back in whenever it was, August or whatever, on an appointment, and I said, I have a vote, and your determination from our rules of procedure was that, yes, the mayor has a vote.
Right.
So instead of them, why couldn't they just there at that meeting suspend the rules and change the rules for that, so then...
Because your rules of procedure also say, if you're changing the rules of procedure, it has to be on the agenda.
Okay.
So I think there's more flexibility with, we can suspend the rules to add, to, you know, move stuff around, to talk about something else.
Right, and that's what the...
But if you're, the rules, on that point, I remember the rules of procedure specific...
Specifically, say.
Say that there has to be enough on the agenda so the public knows what rule of procedure is being changed.
Okay, okay.
That's why we could not do it at that meeting.
So wouldn't a change to the rules of procedures basically saying that the mayor will have the right to vote on any appointments, removals, hirings, or firings?
Right, and this, and this rule may not be suspended?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it just, that would cover, you know, like I said, any appointments, any removals from a board, any hirings or any firings of employees.
Yeah, we could do that, but the...
I mean, it could just be the rules of procedures, it wouldn't require...
I just want proper notice given to the community. I think that's fair. I mean, it's being transparent, quite frankly, and it's, so we know what the discussion is going to be about, you know, especially if it's a hiring of someone or, you know, firing for that matter. I mean, I would like to know, quite frankly, that from, and this may be, could this be an ask of, can this be a rule that we make instead of the state and trying to get it through that, that from the time the election has been decided to the time the new members of... To the time the new members of council get sworn in, no major decisions can be made. You know, like, I understand there, you know. I mean, they, they can do anything in that window of, of time and stuff, and, and you're sitting ducks and going, "Well, we have to live with what they voted in." Can we put that in the rules of procedure that those changes, or is that a state thing?
That's a state thing.
That's local legislature.
'Cause that's been done.
And that's also in, in the statutes when you hold that, that particular meeting, so it's already stated.
Now, there are certain things, or at least there were when you could do annexations, and certain big things that you can't do so many days, you know. Either coming up to an election and, so there's very specific items in states that you about that, but you can't. One board can't tie the hands of another board.
Right. Well, that's, yeah. But I think that if we could get that in, that covers. The concern.
Okay, now you're talking about adequate notice of anything, if you look at rule number nine, proposed agenda. There's already an A. There is already a two full working days. That you can, um, request to have an item of business placed. But any council member may, by a timely request, that would be on, would be on page five. Timely request and have an item placed on the proposed agenda, a copy of the proposed ordinance shall be attached to that proposed agenda. But what you're, what this rule doesn't say is. If you, if, if a board member wanted to add something to that agenda. Or if they wanted to talk about something that was controversial. This just says they have to have two full working days, business days, in order to get something added.
Which paragraph?
It's gonna be A.
A.
It's on rule nine.
Between a request to have an item on business place. Must be received at least two full working days before the day of the meeting. So you would assume that any major decision made, that if it wasn't posted properly, is void?
Well, you could, there, there's, there's a, there's a gray area there because your agendas are draft. Until you actually adopt them at the meeting, and anything can be changed, added, moved around, until that adoption has been made. What, what I hear being said is, is that you want to have adequate, um, notice for things that come up at the meeting. You know, that may be controversial.
Action items.
Well, action items.
Why don't you put, you can add discussion items, but any action items.
Yeah.
Can't be decided.
Right.
Here, here's my, my point is to say if, um, they have a, a group, two, if it's a two to one situation, they come in and they think they need to hire somebody. And that, that's an action, so if they could suspend the rules, put it on the agenda and actually hire someone. When I haven't even had the time to look at their resume or look at their qualifications, or it hasn't, we haven't given proper time, so. How can that, we allow that to happen in a, a situation like that, because that, that's, that's where I'm going with all of this, you know, I mean, especially. Important decisions, whether it's hiring, firing and all that, that it gets, and I know it's personnel.
I think you can tighten up nine to be specific to discussion items versus action items.
Discussion.
Because sometimes the public comes and mentions something and you guys, "Okay, let's talk about it tonight," and you, and you wanna have the ability.
Right.
To address those concerns and discuss it, but not necessarily.
Make a decision.
Take it, take action.
Well, that's, that's been done too, I mean, I've said, so, and I made that clear in, in a, in a, in a meeting, I'm, I'm. Positive that I, I said, "Okay, so we're just gonna be discussing this, correct?" And, and I got that in the affirmative from a council member, and then all of a sudden an action was taken, so that would've made that action void. Quite frankly.
Yeah, that was at the August eighth meeting.
Okay, well, I, I just, th- these are the things I think that are just unfortunate that, that happened, that doesn't give council enough time to prepare. And quite frankly, the constituents of Marvin, say, to your point, if. We know they're gonna be, "Maybe I wanna go to that meeting just to hear what they say and stuff, because I know it's on the meeting and it's no surprise to anyone and stuff, so."
Okay.
So maybe look at that scene, maybe some proposed things for the March meeting that we can look at as a council to potentially. Is that what I'm hearing from council too? I, I haven't heard from you Nick or Cam, is, is that, that suffice? I mean, I don't know.
To amend rule nine for, okay, discussion items can be brought up during the meeting. But action items need to be received two full working days before the meeting, but how, the packet goes out?
Well, I think, I think, I think action items, if there's gonna be an addition of an action item, it has to be on the agenda that goes out to the public.
Okay.
It has to be.
Before the.
Goes out before. That's the.
But what about situations where that day she gets something in the mail? And SDOT says, "Hey, we need."
I guess you gotta, you know, except for, except for emergency thing or something. What determines an emergency?
So, I mean, make it just action items regarding to, 'cause really what you're talking about is.
How about staffing?
Hiring.
Staffing, any staffing or appointments.
Yeah. Can you be that specific?
Yeah, I don't really wanna limit yourself to that specifically, um, you could. Make an exception for staff can bring. Action items.
There you go.
If necessary.
Yeah. Action items.
Staff?
Staff.
Staff, like if she gets something in the mail the day of the meeting and you don't have another, it needs to be received by DOT in ten days, you don't have another meeting before that.
Yeah.
She can, you know, present it.
Yeah, that's good.
Well, generally, what I have done with, with, with stuff like that is if we get something in the mail. Um, that needs council's action, and it's before you ever, and we need it in ten days before next meeting, then. I would generally send out an email to council saying, "Okay, we've got this information that we, we need to go ahead and act, we have ten days in order to make that, that action." Do you want to call a special meeting for this? Just a particular item, those are the items that you would generally see as a special called meeting. Because those are items that you're not going to take action on at a next regular, uh, meeting, because it's gonna be another month. So, um, or you have to determine whether or not that's an emergency meeting and, and emergency meetings are only for imminent. Emergencies, and they're spelled out in the statutes. But for things such as that, that needs to have council action, then you could call in a, a special meeting, which is a forty-eight hour notice. Um, and so any, you know, the mayor and the mayor pro tem and two other council members can do that, so. You still have that option.
So if we have, so, and I hear what you're, I, I totally got what you're saying, but if it's like something that Chris gets in, or you get in, or whoever gets in. The day before our meeting, instead of having to call a special meeting. You guys could add it to the agenda as an action item that night, so that we don't have to call a special meeting since we're gonna have a meeting.
But generally, what's customary is if we do that, that needs to go out to council before. That gets added to the agenda, say, "Okay, this is what we've got in today, do you want to add it to this agenda?" Or is this?
How far in advance? Just.
As soon as they.
As soon as we get it, because, I mean, if I were to get, say, say we got the, uh, DOT contracts. Today, and your meeting is Monday. I would say, "Okay, Chris, we've got these contracts, um, we need to get, we need to get council's approval on these," so. I would make a copy of those contracts, and then I would send it out to council, say, "Okay, we need your approval and it needs to go on the Monday's agenda." That's how that is happened, that's how I handle that.
And I think if that happens and we've got enough notice for you to get that information out to us, then I think that's how we should do it, but say it comes in on a Tuesday at three o'clock.
But still, you'd still have enough time because the meeting is not until, your meeting is not until six thirty, so you have a little bit of, a little bit of flexibility there.
This is the issue, though, if A kinda conflicts with D.
It does.
It does, quite a bit.
Those need to be clarified. Because if the agenda's been published five days before, but it's saying that you guys can then add something two days before.
And then it said, "Notwithstanding, the council may add items to the agenda at any regular meeting," so there's three there.
Well, and there again, you could, you could also change your practice on how, how you receive this information. You could require that I send you a draft agenda and say, "Okay, this is what we have on the agenda." Um, do you have anything before the final one is published out? That's where you can make that, that determination, you see it ahead of time, and then you're gonna say, "Oh, yeah, but I wanna talk about this, this and this." And so, but the packet's not gone out.
Right, so you say.
You still have time to do that.
I need replies by, you know.
Exactly.
Three o'clock today.
Exactly, so if you, if we set up a common practice, after the next, um, uh, regular meeting and work session. All right, I wanna see these three items, or I would like to discuss these three items on the next regular agenda. Then that gives me, um, uh, the authority to go ahead and put that in a draft agenda, send it out to you all and say, "Okay, this is what we've got." And, um, I need your responses because the, your agenda needs to go out five days ahead. And then you've got everything, that could be a, a procedural change, and not just, you know, put here, but. We do need to, to address A and, A and D because they do conflict, and.
I think they conflict on. I mean, my concern is that I don't want, I don't believe that we should be adding things or changing the agenda. Once it goes out to the public, once the public, and we can't now re, let them, you know, because people theoretically, the public looks at it and goes, "No, no, I wanna see, I don't really have interest with me." And then we put something that, you know, they maybe would've wanted to see, so I think that's the main thing from my mind is that we don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't like things being added to an agenda, anything, especially, you know. Controversial or anything added to an agenda after it's gone out to the public and they have no notice of it.
You wanna be as transparent.
The five day, I think, I think is more internal, that we want a copy.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think that's an internal thing, but. Five days, you know, because the, that wa, that I think was added because we had some issues where, you know. A council member would put something on the agenda and come into the meeting with, you know, fifteen pages of, and you say, "How could I read this fifteen pages?" You know, we didn't get. We need that, you know, five days in advance, so.
Well, and it still can happen, that's why, that's why I think maybe, um, put some teeth in this, we'll, we'll stop that.
I'm reading it right, it, it appears that rule nine needs to be probably cleaned up and, and, and if we can maybe have you work on that and then. Maybe make some suggestions, throw it out to us before, but by the next meeting in March, that we can come to, to make an official.
So you like the idea, just so we have consensus, you like the idea of a draft agenda being sent by a specific time. You have to respond if you want any items added to that drafted agenda by a specific time. And then you can add discussion, discussion items only may be added to the agenda.
I think that's, I think there's where we're going, yeah, and I think that addresses the issues we're talking about.
If staff needs something, then we can always add it after that certain time frame.
Right, staff, yeah, if, if necessary, staff may add.
Yeah.
Action.
Including like. What did I have to come in?
If, if a decision, you know, has to be made prior to the next meeting.
If there's a, if, something is requiring a, a date, a deadline or something, can be added by staff and stuff, that, that, so. Okay.
Okay, before we leave this, though, I'm still not clear on. The mayor voting issue, where I heard you Nick say that. You want the rule of procedure to state that, um, the mayor can vote on appointments.
Appointments.
Hires. And fires.
And removals from boards, you know, board appointments and removals.
Hiring and firing.
And hiring, staff hirings and firings.
Okay, and you're, um.
Only. Only.
Right.
Yes, I mean, I don't.
Unless there's a tie, like normal.
Right, right, right.
And you're confident in doing that with the rules of procedure and not a local act?
If you're comfortable defending it.
I'm, I'm comfortable because of, yeah, one oh six A, one oh one, and it's not, you're worried about, right, big things that can be challenged. I think under one oh one A, you all can give the mayor that authority.
Yeah, I mean, I would think if, if you, like I said, you were giving the mayor the right to vote on, on ordinance or something big like that, you know, that could be challenged.
Then you'd wanna do, do what Gastonia's doing.
But appointments are our own thing, I mean, you know, and hirings and firings are our own internal, basically.
Right, and there's another part in the statute where it talks about, you know, the mayor and the board. The board and the mayor responsible for appointments to the various boards and commissions of the city government, such as planning commission, boards of adjustments. So, I mean, it, it talks about the mayor being part of that too.
And I believe we had a time before, I guess Mike Konyak was made, he actually did the appointments.
Oh, I don't remember really.
There's some specific statutes, like, um, the mayor by statute is the appointing official for the housing authority, well, you all don't have a housing authority, but there's certain appointments by statute that the mayor. Does without any say from council.
Just to be clear and on the record, this is not a power grab by any means, it's more of a protectionism method when we are. Or anyone is at a two to one disadvantage, I think they wrote that separate to. Allow that to happen, and then it was obviously removed and makes sense to, uh, have. On the books. All right? Anything else on that? On the rules of procedure? Glaring or we need to address, okay. We've tabled review of code of ethics, so we just caught up on a little bit of time, so. To your point, Nick, we never, but we had a half hour disadvantage right now, okay, so, next up I have is six, uh, which is now five. Discussion of village hall. And again, we wanted you in here to discuss about what we can, can't talk about, and I think the most recent information that I both, I think I got from Barbie and from you. Was that if we're gonna be talking about specific properties, that has to be disclosed.
Right. Address, parcel number.
Okay. So can we, let me ask you this, can we just talk about a property in general, saying that if we have something in mind. But we have questions about environmental issues like that, can we talk about that in general, or is that something? Cause, you know, about a property that we may wanna get an environment, like is the septic, uh, if they have a septic system. And we're looking at, uh, purchasing something, and given that it would be a government facility. Can we talk in general about trying to find somewhere, planning to find some, before we, if we were really serious about going in and making an offer. Is making some sort of plans and, uh, of whether it's a builder or saying, "Hey, who do we talk to about? Can this facility hold and house? This current septic system, hold and house this and stuff without disclosing the property?" Or?
The only thing you can talk about in closed session are terms that you would. That would be part of the contract that are up for negotiation, you know, price. You know, timing of certain things, it's just things that.
Closing dates and then.
Right, um.
But then.
Making someone pay for an environmental study could be part of it.
But in that closing, um, say if we said, "Okay, we're gonna have thirty days," in that closed session, can we say, "We need to, um, make the offer if the offer's accepted in, in the closing days." In that closed session, we talk about, um, what we need to do as a council to. Whether it's a builder that may need to take a look at it or, um, cause there's a lot of pieces that we're like, okay. If a council member brings up the fact that, "Can, can you take this particular property and make it a government facility?"
I don't think you can do that, you have to, you have to disclose the location.
So if we wanna, can we talk in generalities?
The only thing you.
Can we talk in hypotheticals without, right now, without having to disclose?
Not according to the statutes, not the way the statutes.
Well, no, they're in open session, they can.
In open session, yes.
Yes, you can't go in a closed session without disclosing.
So if we go into closed session, we have, say, we are going in closed session to talk about parcel blah, 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 blah. Right now, we can just talk about hypotheticals and, and, and not have to disclose a piece of property.
Yes, right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so we're.
Okay, so I think that's for right now, even though I think, you know, things are, you know, being disclosed all the time and stuff, but I think for our purposes. Talking about village hall and stuff, I know. We have on the plans and, and I was very concerned of what I learned from last, um, uh, the last meeting that, uh, the direction, you know, I don't know what that, yes.
Can we hold the, I need, can we take a vibe break really quick?
Oh, sorry, sorry.